Call is being ordered. Roll call please. Here.
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 At this point, I would like a motion to adjourn to executive session.
I'll make a motion to adjourn to executive session.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned to executive session.
Need a motion to adjourn from executive session?
Make a motion to adjourn from executive session.
Second.
We have a motion and second to adjourn from executive session. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Due to the fact of the longevity of our executive session, sorry, excuse us for being late. Very important matters we were discussing, some of the members need to take a pause for the cause of refreshes, so in about five minutes we'll be back up for regular meeting. Can we all stand for the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and the right to life.
Thank you.
Lisa.
I insist. New business, discussion regarding the town of Florence's desires to pursue membership in the Maricopa Association of Governments Metropolitan Planning Organization or the Suncorridor Metropolitan Planning Organization. We have two resolutions before council tonight. The first resolution is Resolution Number 1383-13. That resolution will make us a member of the Maricopa Association of Governments Metropolitan Planning Organization. The next resolution, which is Number Two, is Resolution Number 138413. And that is to go with the Suncorridor Metropolitan Planning Organization.
Mr. Montague.
Mayor, Council, good evening. You all may recall on January 22nd, council passed a resolution in support of entering into the Suncorridor MPO along with Coolidge, Eloy, Pinellas County, and Casa Grande. And the basis of that resolution that council passed as long as Superstition Vista's and the Santan Valley was included in the Suncor MPO, the town of Florence would also be part of that. Things have transpired over the last couple of weeks. Staff about a week after that found out that from the Arizona Department of Transportation and the Federal Highways Administration, they are now saying that the Santan Valley is part of Maricopa, is part of MAG. So that portion would no longer be available to Florence or to the Suncor MPO if we went in that direction. So staff is back here for looking for additional direction from council because at this point in time Casa Grande has to submit their MPO plan to the state in the coming week. And the town has an option of either being a part of the Suncor MPO, going into MAG MPO, or staying with CAG, which means basically doing nothing. So at this time, we are seeking additional direction from council.
Do we know for a fact that MAG will accept us?
Yes.
Jess is printing out the resolution that we passed. This is one of the things that until today I hadn't made up my mind which way I thought would be in the best interest and in the future of our growth. Santan Valley is our neighbor, our closest neighbor. It borders within four or five miles of our northern border. There's a lot of work that needs to go into Santan Valley and the transportation planning. If we go with the MAG proposal, we're only talking about the transportation and somewhat into your air quality control, is that correct? We passed a resolution in support believing at the time that Santan could go into the Never being told that it couldn't until the last couple of weeks we were told at a meeting that we wanted to attend, but were not allowed to attend. A meeting sponsored by the State of Arizona State Highway Department Transportation, Federal Highway Department Transportation, and Casa Grande. Mr. Knutson had requested us to go to that meeting. We were told, no, we couldn't go. That's when we were told that the Santan Valley had been given to MAG off of the 2010 census. Do we know when the 2010 census actually came out? Was it when the final census report came out, or was it with the primary or the initial?
I believe it was mid-last year when the 2010 census was finalized.
In all the meetings we've attended, and Jess, correct me if I'm wrong, there's never been any discussion about Santan Valley being taken and given to Maricopa Association of Governments Transportation Planning until about two weeks ago.
You're correct. Actually, we were told the opposite. Right.
We were told that there were, up until that point, we were under the impression that all that could be included in the Suncorridor.
Correct.
Who advised us that it could not be in the Suncorridor?
That it could not be in the Suncorridor?
Yes.
We first learned of that about two and a half weeks ago from ADOT and from City of Casa Grande.
In looking at today, is it my understanding, and I wasn't on the council when the initial conversations on the MPO were discussed, is it my understanding that at the beginning of the process, there was discussion in Casa Grande about not wanting anything to do with the Santan Valley?
Very early on in the process, yeah, we, the delegation from Casa Grande came out and visited with Florence, Eloy, Coolidge, Pinellas County, and other entities. When they did come and visit Florence, it was indicated by their council, had indicated, their council indicated through their staff that Santan Valley was not something that they wanted to include within the MPOs. That was part of the initial conversations.
And the members of Coolidge, Eloy, Casa Grande, Pinellas County, and at that time Maricopa have all been notified that the town's position was, that the town of Florence's position was Santan Valley needed to be included in the MPO.
That's correct. In addition to that, City of Eloy, City of Coolidge, and Pinellas County also indicated that they wanted Santan Valley included within that MPO.
Did their resolutions state that?
Their resolutions did state that, although not as clearly as Florence's resolution stated that.
They talked about the planning area that had been discussed in the MPO.
Right.
And my initial response was, you know, as long as that goes in, Santan Valley comes into the MPO, that that's what we passed our resolution on. Now we have to decide because Casa Grande has to make their recommendation, I believe by March 1st, to the governor or to ADOT?
First week in March, we were told the City of Casa Grande will be making a determination on the final packet of what that's going to look like. So at that meeting in March, they're hoping to identify who's in and who's out.
And have you seen the map?
The latest map that the City of Casa Grande has put out is on the screen and also included within your agenda packet.
Would you come up here and take a look at this map and see if it correspond, or apologize, see if it corresponds with what you have on the board?
This is, it's real close. The map that you have in front of you is real close. There is some really minute differences up in, from Florence's perspective, up in this area. So you'll see some very minor changes, some smoothing, as it was referred to, but it, and as a, in a whole, it's 99% the same.
And in the Santan Valley area of that map that you have there in front of you and what's on the board, is any of our planning area included in the Santan Valley area?
And that's the concerning part with respect to this map, is that it does, while it does include all of our municipal boundary, it does not include all of our planning boundary. In fact, a large swath of our planning boundary up in this area is not included within the proposed MPO boundary. If I can refer to, guess, we got two different maps, it's a little confusing and stuff too, but with this map right here, what you have is the, this gray or charcoal area that exists here is the proposed Suncorridor MPO. The purple area over here is the proposed new MAG MPO. The areas that remain outside of there are largely, in part, are the Indian reservations that aren't right now being included into the conversations.
Where's our planning area in the MAG MPO?
Here is Highway 287, and here's Highway 79. Apologize, it's very difficult to decipher here, but you also see Hunt Highway travels along this area. So like I said, all of our municipal boundaries are right here, but I think right on this onset is when, right here is where you're going to see Magic Ranch, which is in our planning area but not in the proposed Suncorridor MPO boundary. So all those areas from like Magic Ranch and north are going to be outside of that The conversations obviously start off by, no city can be in two MPOs. So if Florence chooses to annex some of these areas within our planning boundary up in this area, that's not a part of the proposed Suncor MPO. And if we are in the Suncorridor MPO, doesn't mean that we can annex, but it does put another layer of red tape, if you will, on that process. So there would be, after we annex, there'd have to be a means in which to bring our newly annexed areas outside of the MAG MPO and bring them into the Suncorridor MPO. Again, that's if we reside in the Suncorridor MPO.
Has any communication been with MAG as far as bringing us into the MAG MPO?
In the audience this evening is Eric Anderson. He's the Transportation Director for MAG, and he can clarify, but did have some phone conversations with him over the last few weeks. He did take the idea of Florence joining MAG, the MAG MPO, to their executive committee, and the response that he heard back at that meeting was positive, that Florence could pursue that option.
We have a decision to make tonight that's going to affect Florence for years to come. We're very much concerned about Santan Valley and the corporation of it, the areas that we want to annex in that area, also along with the Superstition Vista project, which we have been annexing up next to the state land due to the fact they have the influence when the growth starts and the development starts in that Superstition Vista project. All along, I've thought that Santan Valley, and I believe it today, that Santan Valley is going to be the largest incorporated town, city in Pinellas County, and it's going to be our neighbor. And we passed our resolution based on the fact that we knew the transportation problems existed in Santan Valley as well as how they're going to connect up with our transportation planning that we have on the books. I'm very disappointed in whose ever responsibility it was to notify us at an earlier date that the Santan Valley could not be in our MPO or the Suncorridor MPO. I feel like we were led along with this. I think that, I'm not sure what happened to come to the conclusion because I did some checking, and I found out that no transportation money had actually been taken out of the CAG region when the MPO supposedly assumed Santan Valley. And then all of a sudden, here we come down to the deadline, and we find out Santan Valley has already been included in MAG. And I'd like to, can you come up a minute and explain? When did you find out that Santan Valley was actually dedicated to MAG?
Please tell us who you are.
Yeah, go ahead and explain.
Yes, I'm Eric Anderson, Transportation Director for the Maricopa Association of Governments, Mayor Rankin, members of the council. We've always thought Santan Valley had to be in the MAG MPO ever since the Bureau of the Census released the urbanized areas definition. What the Bureau of the Census did after the 2010 census was redefine all the urbanized areas in the United States. As part of that, the Phoenix Mesa Urbanized Area, which is the largest urbanized area in the central part of Arizona, included Santan Valley. Under federal transportation law, the law is very, very clear. In fact, the first time I addressed our executive committee, I had the section of federal law on the screen, and it says, "MPO boundaries shall include all of the area defined to be urbanized by the Bureau of the Census after each urbanized area." So our assumption all along has been, if our urbanized area included Santan Valley, then our MPO area had to be extended to include that additional area. And so I can't recall quite when the Bureau of the Census released those urbanized area definitions, but it was, I think, mid-2012.
A question there. We were told in meetings before that the Santan Valley had to go into an MPO because of the urbanized area, the amount of people out there, but that it could have been included in a new MPO that was forming. Had you heard that?
I had not directly heard that, but I certainly, because of the nature of some of the conversations, I did see the town of Florence's previous resolution, and quite frankly, I was scratching my head on how that was happened if, under federal law, once again, it was real clear, it says it shall include all that urbanized area. And in fact, in some of the frequently asked questions on FHWA website, it says, "Can you change it so it's a smaller area?" And the answer was no.
Right.
So once again, I, quite frankly, we weren't directly involved in the discussions with Casa Grande either, but we, once again, we were always under the assumption that that continuously urbanized area had to be included in our metropolitan planning area.
But you're not aware of anything that would have allowed it to come in to the new MPO being formed? Because my impression of what I was told is it could go either way. If the new county wanted it, or the new MPO wanted it, they can include it, or it could go to MAG.
Mayor Rankin, I, I'm not a lawyer, but the way I read the federal law, it's real clear to me, it says it shall include the entire urbanized area. So that's always been our assumption, we're moving forward on that basis. So as many people know, there may be ways that you could waive that requirement under federal law. I just don't know. I had not, we had not heard any discussions about that over the last nine months or so.
And has MAG been involved with the East Valley Partnership on developing plans for the Superstition Vista project?
Not directly. We certainly were involved as a stakeholder, went to public meetings where the different materials were presented, but I don't recall that we weren't directly involved in those planning efforts.
But I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that for doing the planning study for that, that MAG along with the town of Florence put money into that so the plan could be done?
Well, in fact, MAG along with Pinellas County in 2002 did a fairly comprehensive look at what we call the southeast Maricopa, northeast Pinellas County transportation study at that point. I think Pinellas County was doing their transportation plan at the time. And at that point, we actually did a plan for that particular area that laid out some of the higher capacity roadway facilities like the North-South Freeway, State Route 24, which actually links back into the Pinellas County freeway system.
Did the, if you know what I mean, did the Board of Supervisors for Pinellas County, were they the ones that made the decision to have Santan Valley go in with the MPO? I mean, for Santan Valley, the people there, who made that decision for them to join MAG?
Mayor Rankin, members of the council, councilmen, I don't know that the Board of Supervisors weighed in one way or the other on that. Once again, we don't, we didn't get involved in the Pinellas County Board of Supervisors at all. Once again, we've been working with Federal Highway Administration and the Arizona Department of Transportation. They're two primary contacts, they're two, that's what our relationship is with. And so we've been in meetings, certainly, we had a couple of meetings at MAG, talking about boundary issues. We had representatives of Pinellas County there, Maricopa, Casa Grande, and maybe perhaps people from Florence, we kind of had a wide, because we knew this issue was coming up, we had to get it resolved. We had our regional transportation plan update and transportation improvement program underway at the time. We still do have that underway, and so we needed to know what boundaries we were to include in that. And the direction we got from FHWA at that time, this was in the fall, October of 2012, was you can use the boundary as indicated by your expanded urbanized area, which would include the Santan Valley. In fact, we have our plan under production right now, and so we're going to include that. Obviously, it doesn't include a lot of planning activity because we just expanded that boundary, but that will be included in our new plan.
How many, how many members in MAG?
We have 26 cities and towns plus the county, and then three Native American communities, Heta River, Fort McDowell, and Salt River Pima Maricopa Indian Community.
It sounds like the Pinellas County Board of Supervisors didn't, they weren't in a position to provide any type of guidance in there. It sounds like it came down through whatever the situation was with the census at that time. So it was something that was outside of their sphere of influence. I think one of the things that, in the last council meeting that we had in regards to this, we recognize where the growth is going to come from first, I recognize, and at that meeting, basically went out of my way to express the language in that resolution that we put forward with the stipulations that Santan was very important to the town of Florence because of that approaching growth. I have the feeling that we're going to connect to the Santan area before we connect to that other, the other MPO that's coming from below. The other thing that goes into consideration of this, as mentioned before, is our planning area and what happens when, if we go with the Suncorridor and we have some of that area up there that we're interested in. So, you know, those are the things that I'm looking at in regards to this. So that's pretty much where I stand on it.
Let me ask you, if we decided to go with MAG, what could we be looking for in the near future from MAG on transportation studies for this area?
Well, Mayor Rankin, members of the council, you know, what comes to mind is some work on Hunt Highway, obviously very familiar with that. Hunt Highway is also of interest. Queen Creek obviously is impacted dramatically by Hunt Highway, as you are also. It really is that vital connection between these two areas. We're doing, we've done a number of corridor plans that are pretty innovative. We're dealing right now with Grand Avenue, and those of you familiar with the Phoenix area, Grand Avenue diagonal highway much as Hunt Highway is, as a rail issue, six different jurisdictions along there plus the county, and it's a state highway. So other than that, it's a real simple process, but really coordinating the different activities, access management in that corridor, signal timing. We put about $300,000 a year in signal timing programs. Communities can apply for that funding. We bring in technical consultants to look at signal timing. We look at particular issues that might be able to improve traffic flow in that area. Once again, we wouldn't be the first ones looking at it, but once again, I think we have a number of simulation models that we can bring to bear and looking at different options too. So that's one thing that comes to mind. The North-South Freeway, quite frankly, we refer to as Pocacho Vista Freeway, not for anything, it sounds a lot better than the North-South Freeway. We think it's a vital link for central Arizona, not just for Maricopa County, not just for Pinellas County, but it's also a critical facility that we'd like to see built at some point in the future, sooner rather than later. We've been very creative in bringing to bear how to accelerate projects, how to find creative funding solutions. We worked with the City of Mesa on the first segment of State Route 24, which is the Gateway Freeway. We accelerated $100 million of funding for that facility using some creative financing that Mesa was able to do. So once again, you know, I have an economics background, a finance background. I kind of specialize in creative ways of looking at things. It's kind of my, that's what I do. So we can bring all that to bear for the community too. We also have the socioeconomic projections capability. In fact, the platform that CAG is using right now is something that we've developed, so we have consistent socioeconomic projections. Our transportation modeling, we have a staff of 13 people that all they do is look at how to improve the forecasting capabilities for the region. We're also working economic development, as Mayor Rankin knows, and so we have a lot of different aspects of what we're trying to do, so that's kind of a broad overview. You're also in a PM10 non-attainment area now that's newly created. We have CMAC funds. We program about $50 million of congestion mitigation or quality money every year. Those monies can go to paving dirt roads projects, although it's not terribly cost-effective to use federal funds for that, buying PM10 certified street sweepers. Once again, as you enter the wonderful world of non-attainment for air quality, the air quality plans will mandate certain kinds of dust controls that will have to be implemented in the future in that whole non-attainment area. So we have probably the best air quality staff in the country, quite frankly. So I think from an air quality perspective, it opens up the process for paving dirt roads, air quality, street sweepers. Bike and ped projects actually qualify for CMAC funding too. We use part of that funding for signal optimization program to time signals along some of these major corridors, those sorts of things. So there's just a whole variety of ways that you can access different MAG programs and areas of expertise.
In MAG at this time, is any of your area covered by the Tucson District for ADOT?
Mayor Rankin, in fact, we're in four ADOT districts right now. We're in Tucson, Globe, Prescott, Yuma, and Phoenix. That's five. So we have pieces in five different ADOT districts.
So us being in the Tucson District, it's not going to be any problem?
No, no, Mayor Rankin, in fact, ADOT has reorganized. They have now an urban program that's combining the Phoenix and Tucson engineering specialties because they're dealing with a lot of the same problems. So we work basically with that group now. That was done late last year.
Okay. Now, I'm going to ask you a question. I don't know the answer to it, but how much is it going to cost us to cut in MAG?
Well, our dues, and I could have done this calculation, but I'll use the City of Maricopa as an example, that was the last one I did. I think we were looking at about $800,000. I think we were looking at about $8,000 a year, that's the total dues and assessments. Your population is less, about 25,000, I believe, so it'd be in the $6,000 to $7,000 range every year, and that's the dues and assessments. We have certain assessments, like we do homeless planning, and so if you're not participating in that program, you don't have to pay that assessment. It's a pretty de minimis amount for those kinds of programs. So you would only pay the assessments for the programs that you're actually taking advantage of. We do the 208 planning, for example, in Maricopa County, CAG does it here, and we expect CAG would continue to do that for Penale County. So there wouldn't be, you wouldn't be participating in that particular program as it exists today.
Would we be considered a member of MAG in just the transportation, air quality, or for the whole ball of wax with MAG?
Mayor Rankin, you're a MAG member with kind of all the full responsibilities that come with that. The only caveat to that, like the 208, where the governor has designated certain planning entities responsible for certain functions, and once again, I believe in the 208's a good example of that, and CAG has that designation for Penale County. They would retain that. So, but we do domestic violence, for example, which doesn't really have a defined district, so if you want to participate in that, certainly you're welcome to do that, too. So we have just a lot of different things you can participate in if you so choose. It's a voluntary organization, you can be as active as you care to.
And right now, there's two, two communities, or three now, in Penale County that are members of both CAG and MAG. Is that correct? Patchy Junction, Queen Creek, and Maricopa.
That is correct.
And MAG and CAG have worked hand-in-hand on different projects over the years, is that correct also?
Yeah, absolutely, yes.
And that wouldn't, because of this formulation of the MPO, if we were to go to MAG with this, it wouldn't have any bearing on the eastern part of Penale County? I mean, there could be help there going to between the communication between two municipal planning organizations?
No, absolutely, and under federal law, too, because we're adjacent metropolitan planning organizations, we actually will have an MOU developed once the sun corridor MPO is up and running, that'll define relative roles and responsibilities, and kind of it's not terribly detailed, but we'll have that in place, too. And that, we've agreed, you know, with, we had extensive discussions with staff, we're going to continue to do what we can to support their efforts. We're all in this together, especially on the air quality side, because that's something we know that it's a new element that you have to deal with, and again, we've been doing it for 25 years or so, and just have a lot of experience dealing with that. So, again, however the vote goes, we're going to continue to do what we do and hopefully make sure we do good transportation planning for the state.
Okay, one other question I got. You've seen the alignment of the North-South corridor that we've bought off on and are promoting. Do you have any, does MAG have any opposition to that?
Mr. Rankin, Mayor Rankin, we have not taken a position, we typically would not take a position on freeway corridors like that. That's really up to the local jurisdictions, you know, within reason. When we do the plan, we're setting out broad corridors, and then ADOT through the corridor, the EIS process, and the alignment process actually defines exact alignment. We work with our communities, we do a lot of mediation between the Department of Transportation and local jurisdictions, but we would not typically take any position that it ought to be absolutely on this line. Although, I will say, we have done that in the past when ADOT wanted to put it, one of the connections, in the 303, south or further north than the region wanted it, and so we actually weighed in on that, but that's a very rare circumstance. That was unanimous vote, too.
Okay, thank you. I don't have any other questions. Anybody have anything else? Tara?
I would like to elaborate, too, that, you know, I appreciate MAG in the sense that they have established resources, their technical expertise, and I am disappointed that it wasn't brought to us in January, where it even showed the results of the 2010 census expanded the MAG urban area to include Santan Valley. This information would have been beneficial in January.
And that's not MAG's, that wasn't MAG's responsibility to get that information to us? I believe it was the responsibility of ADOT and Casa Grande to have got that information to us before we passed our resolution. I think that information should have been given to us. Jess, I noticed Casa Grande coming up to talk, do they have anything that they'd like to say? Thank you for, appreciate it.
Do we have a staff from Casa Grande is in the audience? Council has any questions for him? I'm sure he'd be happy to address the council.
No, I don't have any questions, I already know where I stand. Any other question?
Unless the representative wants to make any statement, I have none.
Mayor, City Council, I'm Dwayne Itell, the Traffic Engineer for the City of Casa Grande, and I've been involved in the MPO formation from the beginning. And all along, our stance has been, not to try to coerce anybody into joining the sun corridor MPO, but you need to do what you think's right for your city, and whatever you decide, we'll be here coordinating in the future, working together. I wanted to just make that clear.
I don't have any, does anybody have any question? I got the one question I want to ask you. Did you know prior to December or January that the Santan Valley would be within MAG and it could not come into the sun corridor?
I think from the very, very beginning, as Eric mentioned, we read the law back in March and April and thought that same thing. There was a certain faction of people that thought differently. We tried to make sure that was communicated throughout the time period, but up until two weeks ago, a firm ruling from ADOT and FHWA didn't come out. We felt it needed to go with MAG, but there was some thought that there could be some kind of waiver, but I think two or three weeks ago, the FHWA and ADOT firmly said it needs to go to MAG.
Okay, thank you.
But as our MPO, we thought that right from the beginning.
No, I just wanted to make a comment that, you know, we appreciate, I appreciate the offer for, on behalf of the town, for that opportunity, and, you know, depending on which direction this goes, we still want to maintain really good relationships, and, you know, it's what's in the best for the citizens, and that's pretty much the direction that we're looking at, so.
We feel that same way, and we, you know, we went through this with the City of Maricopa, they discussed going one way or the other. We plan on working with them in the future, too. So we're all still partners, friends, neighbors, and whatever happens here, it won't change any of that at all.
Thank you.
Good, thank you. Folks, appropriate, I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make the motion that we adopt Resolution 1383-13.
I'll second that motion.
And we have a motion to second any other discussion? Now, I'd ask for a roll call vote, please. Yes.
Yes. Councilmember Hawkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Woolridge?
Yes.
Councilmember Selaya?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Have unanimous vote. Call to the public. I have one public. Denise?
No, he still can't control me. I said, "No, he still can't control me." Denise Coler, Florence. It's kind of after the fact, but I hope that you make the right decision that's best for our community and all the people that will be coming in in the future. That's what's important. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the public? Not any in the motion? To adjourn? Oh, call the council. Tommy?
Nothing.
Tom? Bowery?
No.
Bill?
I have nothing.
Tara?
I have one thing. I want to thank staff for the report that they put together. I really appreciate how you incorporated a lot of the pros and the cons in the way that it was outlined, I appreciate it.
Make a motion to adjourn.
A second.
Whoa, 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 whoa. Hey, I just want to remind everybody, Country Thunders coming up, we're going to have a good time over here, and come to Florence and enjoy yourself, party hearty. Now we need a motion.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second. A motion to second adjourn, all in favor, signify by his aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries, we're adjourned.